Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call the special meeting today for the Mid-Island Initiative Area Project. Kristia, are we in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, sir, we are.
Will you please make the roll call?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Ames?
Here.
Mr. Hawkins? Mrs. Becker?
Here.
Mr. Lennox?
Here.
Mr. Stanford?
Here.
Mayor McCann?
Here.
Mr. Hawkins on the premises someplace. Okay, will you please join me in a pledge of allegiance?
... to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Hawkins is here. Okay, we're here today to talk about the Mid-Island Initiative Project. I'd like to call Jennifer Ray for opening discussions.
Before we start, can I just ask for two seconds worth of time?
Sure, you can.
Sure, thank you.
Jennifer, two seconds to walk up.
I just wanted to take a moment while we're embarking on this very exciting project and counting our blessings that we're actually able to do that, that we take a moment and think about the Afghani people and our now 7,000 troops who are needlessly in harm's way, and that we remember our veterans and their families, and we pray for them as well, and we thank them for their service and their sacrifices that have kept us safe for the last 20 years, and we pray that it continues and we do everything we can to support them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer Ray, Capitol Program Manager for the record, and I'm happy to be here today to kick off this exciting project, the Mid-Island Initiative Area Project. As you remember, it was a town council priority project, includes both preparation of a redevelopment strategy for the middle of our island as well as plans for a new community park on the town-owned tract affectionately called the Mid-Island Tract. The difference in what we're doing today is that usually when we come to y'all, it's when we already have a plan and we're just asking for your support of it. We're trying to flip that now and come to you first. This is our very first kickoff meeting for this project. We want to hear from you all because you are the ones that are actually going to approve the plans when it comes to you unanimously, I hope. But we will bring that forward down the road. But want to just hear from you what your expectations are, what you think, what you want to see and hear, what's important to you. We went out for RFQ like we typically do. We hired an amazing team, MKSK, and you can see their partners up on the screen. They're going to tell you about who all is on their team. But today, they're here to talk to y'all. On Wednesday and Thursday, they'll be meeting with staff, with several stakeholders. We have 10 stakeholder meetings scheduled over two days as well as a Parks and Recreation Workshop. On their next visit, there will be more broad public engagement where we'll ask the public at large to come out to open house type events and really hear what's going on. But right now, they're doing their research, getting started right here with town council. I have Brian Kinselman, who is the principal of the firm, and I'm going to turn it over to him to start the discussion today.
Thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Brian, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Town Manager, Council Members, and Citizens. Thanks for having me. Thanks, Jennifer, for the introduction. First and foremost, I just want to let everybody know that we are thrilled and honored to be involved in this. This is a tremendous opportunity for our island and humbled to be of assistance. So, as they say, let the games begin, right? This will be exciting stuff. I know your time's precious, so I'm going to go through this presentation with some pace, but not recklessly so. Please feel free to stop me at any time. But the purpose is to get your input, your initial feelings on this project holistically. With me is Tony Ruel, one of my colleagues, who will be responsible in managing the park design portion of this process. So Tony will be taking copious notes, so please opine away. Want to show you who our project team is. It looks to be extensive, but they are material experts in each of their key areas. Give you a project overview, a schedule, and some milestone dates. It is, again, moving with some pace. It's a priority for the town, and we understand that. Give you some of our early thoughts on the planning area, the planning initiative area, and also some early thoughts on the park property itself, and then outline some of the next steps. And again, we'll take your comments and questions along the way. So, again, this looks like an extensive team, but they are subject experts for sure. I will be involved as the principal in charge, and as you may know, I'm a landscape architect and a city planner, so I will be involved in both aspects of the project. Andrew Overbeck, who is a town planner, will be leading the planning initiative area. And Tony, as I mentioned before, will be leading the landscape architectural design for the park itself. We've got a planning team. We've got a landscape architecture team for the park. This is essentially two separate projects, but they're running simultaneously because they're inextricably linked physically and emotionally. Along the way, we have Dover Cole, Victor Dover, as an urban design expert and subconsultant to us, who will be helping us with the area initiative. Resiliency planning and market analysis will be done by Kim Lee Horn. Transportation and mobility, specifically 278, some of the surrounding streets will be dealt with by HDR, who, as many of you know, is involved already with the town on the 278 Parkway Initiative. And then park architecture, to the extent there will be, will be handled by LS3P Architects out of Charleston and civil engineering by Cranston for underground utility and infrastructure work. So it's an extensive team. It looks cumbersome. Trust me, it is not. It will be managed down to the milestone date, and these folks will be jumping in and jumping out as their expertise requires. So as I mentioned before, this is really two projects, but they're running concurrently and they're intertwined. First is the Initiative Area Framework Plan. It is a district plan for that area roughly centered about the Mid-Island Tract. It is to study what future development opportunities may exist. There are very key neighborhoods there that need to be protected and enhanced. There are other redevelopment opportunities. We've got US 278, we've got Parkway Frontage. This piece of ground in this district is very visible. That's good for a number of development opportunities. So we're going to turn over every stone, as it were, through market analysis to understanding what could happen there and how then Task Two, which is the Park Master Plan, how the park can incent that and feed into that. So I applaud you all for approaching these two, what could be separate projects together because of their interrelationship. I think it's more efficient and it's more communicative, one piece to the next. As we craft the framework plan for the district and also the conceptual master plan for the park, that will then go into park final design, construction documentation, bidding, and construction activity to get that underway as a separate and first-phase item. So now the schedule. I won't belabor some of these boxes, but we're at the project kickoff. The star in the upper portion of the image, again, the redevelopment strategy is Task One. The park design is Task Two. Separate yet joined teams, both under my leadership. I hope that gives you comfort. But that will lead to a framework plan that should be complete come late winter, early spring of 2022. We're looking to have the Park Master Plan on the same timeline. However, you will see as I click forward to Task Three, which will be the detailed park design. We're hoping to get a head start on that even before the conceptual design is done. We can be looking at utility work and drainage and some infrastructure work ahead of having the park plan fully cooked. And I think it's going to be necessary for us to move this final park design and Task Three and construction documentation ahead to get us to construction set, bid documents on the street to the construction industry, get a parent low bidder awarded under contract to the city, and then have a park groundbreaking ceremony in November of 2022. So that's a fast schedule. We'll all be very busy in that, but that is extremely exciting and rewarding work, so we look forward to it. So as I mentioned to you before, we're at this kickoff meeting and site tour. We've done the ramblings and rumblings through the old golf course site, and I'm here to tell you it is a magnificent piece of property. It is in a magnificent part of our magnificent island. So it is, Mid-Island is a key term to be hanging on this, a key moniker because it represents almost the geographic center of our island and maybe even the emotional center of the island. So stay tuned. I think that's going to inform us as we move forward in park design. So we've got a rather robust community engagement process. It begins here today with you and constituents behind me. We look forward to hearing everybody's opinions on a number of platforms. So again, this project engagement approach begins today. We'll have community input as we move forward, full aspects of social media. We'll have periodic updates that'll be posted to the town website so everybody can understand in real time where we are in this entire process. We have begun to study all of the planning that you all have done heretofore. Very good planning, I might add. We're not looking to remake any of those plans. We're looking to advance certain key aspects of those plans as it relates to the Mid-Island section. So thanks to all of you and all the hard work that many of you have done and the expenditure of resources to get those planning documents in place. So when we get here in October, we'll be meeting with, continue to meet with stakeholder groups and workshops, web survey, all the keys of touching the public and getting their opinions. February and March upcoming, we'll be into an open house drop-in with some key aspects and highlights of both the park and the district to get hands-on, folks pointing at maps and plans and giving us their opinion. So we look forward to hearing as much of that input from the community as we can possibly get. The stakeholders that we've identified that will need to be touched through many different avenues will be the neighborhood representatives. Again, we've got plantations, we've got historic neighborhoods, we've got other residential groups, if you will, that need to be heard and understood. In many aspects, this park will be their neighborhood park. It will be our community park for the island as a whole. And something tells me it'll be a regional park because I hope and pray it's going to be a magnificent addition to the rest of the great parks we have. The historic and cultural resources. Obviously, this island is rich in both of those, history and culture. I think it's an opportunity to greatly showcase those. Parks and Recreation, that whole constituency, how we deal with active and passive recreation. The park ecology. We need to deal with what Mother Nature gave us. Mother Nature's been manipulated a bit through this golf course construction, but I think this park design is going to be all about managing the storm water, the water that's on the site, the grading, the resiliency needs of the island as a whole. So there is a happy marriage in there. Certainly, active recreation, community developers, development community, and how real estate professionals may relate and inform what this redevelopment area could be. Commercial property owners. We have significant commercial ground here that may or may not need to be addressed, but they certainly have a voice in this. The airport, we know the airport is about to expand, and that is no small feat, and it needs to be accommodated by this district. And there's also auxiliary and spin-off development opportunities that comes with that airport expansion that I think is to our benefit. And then not the least will be the utilities, private and public utilities, that are adjacent to or through the site. We need to understand their wants and needs and their future development plans. So again, a whole host of outreach, public meetings, boards and opinion gathering, website, social media. We'll take all the opinions we can get. Again, I mentioned before, you've done some great work heretofore. We've begun to take a deep dive into these documents and understand what the Parks and Recreation Master Plan suggests for the Mid-Island. Now to the Planning Initiative Area. You can see it is the geographic center of the island. Not to be ignored is the significance of the airport adjacent. So in plan view, you can see the, on the left image, the circle generally defines the study area for the district. I don't think that limit is going to be quite as precise as a perfect circle. We'll follow roadways and parcel ownership and development opportunities as it goes hither and yon. But again, not lost on anybody, the 278 passes through the center of this, the Parkway. The plantations adjacent, the airport is a big player. And on the right image, you can begin to see some of the opportunities we have with the central location of the golf course and also the town-owned ground. We've got the Ashmore parcel across the street and some public service properties that is under town ownership, all of which need to be considered. There is our site in perspective view. We've got these great infill and redevelopment opportunities. We've got some strip retail that one could argue is underutilized. Maybe it's time for us to breathe fresh life into that and what could those be? The retail world has been changing quickly. It has changed even at a quicker pace the last two years since COVID has hit. So it's time for all retail strategies to be revisited. As I mentioned before, the airport vicinity, that's got its own on-the-ground and above-the-ground considerations to be taken into account for redevelopment. The airport's expansion and what that might mean to spin-off development, I think it will be significant. We're going to conduct a market study. Kim Lee Horn is going to be doing that on our behalf so that we all know in unbiased fashion what some of the demands are for residential, for retail, for commercial. What's office doing? We know the office market has dramatically changed, at least in the short term, since COVID has hit. We'll see what that turns into as and if COVID allows us to return to some normalcy. So we want to hear from the experts what we might expect on Hilton Head Island to be viable commercial and residential development. That is additive to the place. The neighborhoods, as I mentioned before, we've got these, we're graced to have these wonderful gullah historic and cultural neighborhoods on the island. I continue to think that we can showcase those to add a certain richness to what it is we do on this island, not to mention the plantations that are adjacent and all the infill residential in between. Hilton Head Island has been known for 40 years for its eye towards its environment and to preservation of green space and the interconnected network of trails. We look to further that and even enhance that. So how we connect through the park, how we interconnect with the neighborhoods and the commercial development is going to be key, as always. Now the park itself, you can see the size of this. It's just over 100 acres. It is a considerable piece of property, and it is a beautiful piece of property. And you can see in the lower part of the image, the Ashmore Track, that again is town-controlled. So in retail sense, we own both sides of the road, and that is not insignificant. Not suggesting that that frontage is for retail, but it's a key point. The Parks Master Plan had suggested some program elements that are shown in the left of this. That is generally the outline of what 100 acres looks like. Crossings Park and Chaplain Community Park are about the same size as this new piece of ground, and they are largely active recreation facilities. You can see in the light green box that there are some active, yet I'll say limited in that regard, propositions for that happening in the Mid-Island Tract. But largely, I think this will go towards nature preserve and conservation areas and something more on the passive side of things. But we'll see what the public has to say and how this process rolls out. But we are approaching this very carefully relative to the natural environment. You can see in the map of the island, upper right, the location and the size, relative size of these three parks. I applaud you for controlling this Mid-Island piece. It's a tremendous opportunity. For sake of comparison, just to demonstrate largely to myself, but certainly to communicate to you all how big this piece of ground is. And it will not be, as they say, a one-trick pony. We've got an opportunity to do a number of different things with this piece of ground without interfering one to the other. Many of you are familiar with Forsyth Park in Savannah, which by my estimations, as I walk through or to drive around it, I think to myself, this is a big park. Well, it's a third the size of our Mid-Island Tract. And the Battery in Charleston, again, just a case in point of something doesn't need to be big to be impactful. That couldn't be any better placed relative to adding character to that part of Charleston if it had to be. It's only six acres. That could be the most impactful six acres in South Carolina. And then Greenville, 32 acres of the Falls Park. We've had the great good fortune of just completing the design of an upstream addition to that park in Greenville, which I think will just add more gravitas to that. So the takeaway here is, big piece of ground. We can fit a lot of stuff in here, should we so choose. Not suggesting it needs to be a potpourri, but we've got the luxury of geography. So now some of the program elements. Passive recreation, playgrounds, nature play, things that fit into the environment, trails and fitness. All of those can be provided for without really being all that recognizable relative to the natural environment. Other more active things we can have, exercise and yoga and disc golf and horseshoes. All of these things don't take up a whole lot of land base. We could put them on a portion of this ground and quite frankly, never find it unless I brought it to your attention. But they might provide a very useful service to our constituency. And then maybe some of the larger land uses of pickleball and tennis, a bank of tennis courts that begins to take up a bunch of ground, obviously. Soccer fields are big pieces of ground, as are football fields, but they're green. They're flat. Again, I can place a couple of soccer fields on this piece of ground, and you might not be able to see them unless you saw those goals that were rolled out prior to a match. So the takeaway here is that there's probably going to be some active recre- there can be some active recreation here without it damaging the passive aspects. But again, we're going to let that process roll out. And then there's the whole notion of civic and gathering spaces. This is city planning, American City Planning 101. Centrally located town square, open space typically has some civic structure on it or around it. So whether we place those in the park or adjacent to the park, the park becomes, if we weren't in an island environment, beachfront property for what happens adjacent to it. So the park incentivizes civic and private development, and quite frankly, the other way around. Activity adds attractiveness to the park. And then the cultural aspects of, again, I continue to showcase the historic nature of this island. Public art, performing arts, visual arts, botanical gardens, formal gardens. Art for art's sake, we have that opportunity. Again, that could be intermingled. That doesn't have to be a place. That could be throughout the park as a whole. So now the piece of ground itself. We've got fairways, wall-to-wall, as it were. We've got the openings for those fairways. Portions of those fairways are used for the concourse, which is a great use for this piece of ground. So where we have clearings, we have the opportunity to maybe place field sports because it's already cleared. We don't have to remove trees. There are some trees there that are significant and indigenous. There are others that are invasive or introduced. So we'll know as we move ahead which need to be absolutely preserved and which may not want to be preserved. We also have the idea of connectivity. Not only along 278 and the trail, the Parkway, the trail system, but we've got a potential for a green belt connection from deep water to the northeast to Broad Creek on the northwest, all through town ground. So I think that's a found opportunity. Again, as I mentioned before, I think this park design is going to center around that water and the water courses. And much of these ponds, many of these ponds, if not all of them, were built for source water and runoff for the golf course, source water for the irrigation system. But now they exist in a fairly stable fashion. There may be an opportunity for us to combine some of these into a larger water body, be more intentional with the connecting corridors and creeks between those ponds. Obviously, pay attention to channelization and erosion and stormwater management and resiliency and all the things that a changing climate on a barrier island means to us. So we'll lead every step with the environment first. Plans are to relocate the St. James Church onto a corner of this property because of their proximity with an expanded runway. That will be certainly brought into the design of this and how that fits into this parcel, how it is meaningfully fit into this parcel will be a starting point as well. Mentioned before, the natural environment, the flora and the fauna. We've got all kinds of critters here that we want to largely encourage to be there. We've got some invasive plants, but we certainly have some specimen-quality plant material, and we need to be friendly to Mother Nature. So that's our understanding of where we are today. Again, we've got two days of kickoff meetings and engagement with stakeholders where we'll bear down into their thoughts and feelings, their wants and needs. We'll continue to fully understand not only the area, but the park itself. We do now have in hand a survey of that piece of ground, contours, underground utilities such as they are, property ownership. So we've got the basis by which we can jump off and start design once we start taking everyone's opinions. And we're going to start immediately the market study. We're also commissioning as part of this a resiliency study to fully understand what, not only this site in this district, but island-wide, what climate change, regardless of your political stripe, what climate change and changes in water elevation mean to us and severity of storms. We've used that tract in the past to store some felled trees during the last major storm, and that may very well be a consideration moving forward. We can't ignore that. So that's going to start almost immediately. And then certainly, and always, engage the community. Can't get enough input from folks in general. And I think with that, I would be happy to take any of your comments or questions, but I'll sit down and, Mayor, let you run conversation with your colleagues.
Mr. Glenn?
Thank you. Brian, thank you for a very interesting and thorough kickoff presentation. I have some background in passive parks, and I was involved in the County Rural and Critical Lands Program, and that was a real focus of ours. And I see a crying need for this parcel to be primarily, if not exclusively, a passive park. I have been on the site. Years ago, I was on it as a golfer, but recently, I was out there just examining the site, and I agree, it's a spectacular opportunity. The, one of the motivating factors that we have in creating this park is to stimulate development of the surrounding commercial properties. development of the surrounding commercial properties and to certainly to protect the surrounding residential properties. In, in that regard, it would be very interesting to me to learn about success stories having to do with parks development, promoting commercial development in, in that same vicinity. In the case of the Low Country Celebration Park, we're seeing that exactly now. That was an area five years ago, which was very past its prime and people have seen the opportunity there and come in and made significant investment. So I would be interested in knowing what types of properties tend to be stimulated by a park of this nature and whether there are any features that would be more beneficial to that, that goal. I'm glad that you mentioned debris storage after a storm, that's a reality for us here. I would hate to see that here, but I think it has to be. I do have a question for you and that is, some time ago, this property had not been cleared or maintained by the town much at all. We had citizen complaints about the condition of the property. Town went in, had a contractor come in and do a lot of cleanup. Personally, I regret that because I think that there are native plants in there that somebody with a bush hog or a string trimmer may not recognize. So I would appreciate your advice on how you would prefer for us to maintain this property or not. I'm excited about this opportunity. I think we can hit a home run here. Obviously you have a strong team around you and we'll look forward to participating in that team as well. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, as I, first of all, thank you, as always. Great presentation. Do have confidence in you and the team that you've put together and I look forward to the future with regard to this tract. And as I started previously, my comments, we are very grateful to everyone who's contributing to this and we all count our blessings that we have this opportunity before us. I think that the overall design that you'll come up with is contingent, obviously, on all the stakeholders having a voice. I think that we have a lot that we've done previously to build from. The opportunities for us to have a place that is serene, beautiful, passive and speaks to the nature and the history of our, our island is just incredible. I really am just using words to say what I've said before. We look forward to the future and thank you for what you will bring to us.
Bill?
Thank you, Brian. I think we all can appreciate that when this is launched, excuse me, and we see the final product, or even while the product is evolving on a conceptual basis, th- this action's going to breed a reaction. And that reaction immediately, I think, will be appreciation in the economic sense for properties surrounding this area. And therein lies the opportunity to do some great things or an opportunity for mischief. And I think while we're at the drawing boards for the park, simultaneously, we have to be looking at what the impact could be. And in doing that, I think we have to refresh ourselves on the buyright uses surrounding this area because therein lies the mischief. And if we see opportunities for development, that could be a flash in the pan, could in ear to the benefit of the individual, but not on a macro sense, in ear to the benefit of this fantastic project, I think we'll be missing the boat. The other comment I have is that I'm much more inclined to be promotive of passive activity. This, this is a beautiful piece of land. I remember when I first got on town council and voted for this, none of us knew what we'd ever use this for, but it was such a good deal, fifty thousand an acre, why not do it and then figure it out later? Not, not a sensible way to plan, but in this case it was. The other thought I have too is, parks are very important to our children in this community and to their families. And the parks, I think frankly, in the minds of people that know much more about it than I do, our parks for our children are probably not at the stage or level of quality that we would like. And so we need to be thinking about that concurrent with this. Absent that concurrency, I think what could happen is that while we planned for this park, and again, I'm inclined to have a passive nature, it could start getting populated with a lot of very active park activity, which might be better suited to be developed in parks that are not functioning well today. So that's a dynamic that if I were a parent of young kids and seeing what we're doing here, I'd be saying, you know, what about where my kids play? And I, I, I think we, we don't have an ideal opportunity to look at this very important piece of land in a vacuum. It has to be looked at within the context of the entire, excuse me, the entire island. Thank you.
Mr. Alex?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Brian, for your presentation. You did say that somebody's taking notes, right? There's a few things on my mind here. I'm very excited about us taking this opportunity. The circle that you drew around the area is, I'm going to try to focus my attention not necessarily on the park, but also appreciate if you could send us a copy of that circle, okay, to study a little bit more. Much of that area that has been identified as part of the opportunity zone. And right, wrong, indifferent, we've seen some requests for zoning changes in that area due to its significance of being an opportunity zone, okay? But what we are embarking on currently is bigger than just an opportunity zone, right? So I guess that's a follow-up to what Mr. Hawkins has, has brought to our attention in terms of development in that area. I would suggest that as you go through your analysis, that we really are identifying not just the current status, but also some of the gaps, okay? That area was deemed an opportunity zone because of its pockets of poverty. We don't want this exercise to turn into gentrification, I think is the word that I'm looking for, okay? But instead, we're looking to improve the quality of life for everyone in that area. And I'm speaking of those in Port Earl Plantation that have concerns about the park being active and I'm speaking of those that are showing up to food pantries once a week because there's a food desert in that area, okay? So how we tie all that together is going to be important. Ultimately, to me, the way that we measure our success is that ten years from now, we've shown that we've improved the quality of life for the residents in that area. And oh, by the way, there's a masterpiece in the middle of it, right? Through your study, we know that we have a need for affordable housing here on Hilton Head. And this particular area that you have drawn the circle around has a lot of affordable housing in that area. I think what we as a council are not necessarily clear on is the actual AMI and the rent in that particular area. Having that in front of us will help us make sound decisions in terms of offerings for affordable housing because I realize that it's not just commercial development in this area, there is a residential piece there also that we want to pay close attention to. I appreciate that you are going to be meeting with stakeholders, would, would ask that if there are others that may bubble up along the way that we don't, don't miss out and, and speak to them. And my last piece before I close, you mentioned that you will have a, a small piece of the, I guess, construction component, okay? Going back to what I said earlier about this area being an opportunity zone, there are pockets of poverty, I would be more than appreciative if you were bold enough to suggest to us as a council that there are some set-asides for minority contractors in this project. I'm not sure if that has been done before here on Hilton Head, but if we start to take a look at our new plan, the whole idea of diversity is definitely included very heavily there. So I appreciate that. Those are my comments, Mr. Mayor. And again, I said before, I am very excited to move forward in this fashion of planning and going through this exercise and you being the lead, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, I'm glad you're involved. I have a lot of confidence in the end product because of your involvement along with your team. The, the social and the recreational benefits of a project like this are pretty obvious. I think what is less obvious is the economic benefits. If you take a look at the two projects somewhat similar to this that the town has been involved with, the redevelopment of Shelter Cove Center and Park and the development of the Celebration Park in the Pope Avenue Tiff and the economic redevelopment that is occurring right now is enormously significant. And I think we hope, I know we hope, to see a similar redevelopment, not development, redevelopment of the quadrants that you had inside that circle with a project of this scope. So I'm going to really be excited to see what your market study tells us about the state of our non-residential community in and around that area.
Mr. Ames, David, can you hear me?
Just a second. Thank you. And I just want to apologize for being somewhat of a distraction today, but I'd also like to thank Krista and John Tutte for setting this up to accommodate me. Yeah, I, I have some comments. I, I have a, a sense of excitement that I have really felt for years. It's, it's a similar sense of excitement that when, when we were developing Hilton Head, there were so many opportunities and it was just a matter of our minds coming up with what made sense and then to work. And the way Brian was talking makes me feel as though that's really uncussed of our opportunity here today. I like the idea of initiative area. Initiative sounds like we're going to try something that hasn't been done before. And it's, this process, as Brian describes it, is looking forward and that's really what this community has to do, in my opinion. The planning process, as Brian has outlined it, is, in my opinion, the hard process. You don't dictate what something is going to be at the outset. You have concepts and then you listen to stakeholders and you begin to weigh the pros and cons. But there are a couple of areas that I think we must include. We have to include island values of environmental stewardship and the environment. That's obvious to most people who come to the island and somehow, we have to exemplify that in, in the decisions that we make throughout this initiative area. The second is innovative community planning. I really believe you, you sort of had to be around Charles Frazier in order to understand creativity and innovation. And it, it was largely the, the things that he put on the ground, commercial, residential, housing, that created the Hilton Head Island that grew over the years. And I see environmental stewardship and innovative community planning as being those things of greatest value to this island going forward. It's important for us on council to keep our minds open to the process so that we come up with a plan that benefits the entire island because that's really where the leverage is. If we do something for the entire island, then there's going to be benefit across the board and for the future of the island. I guess, closing words I would have today is we've got to get this right. This is, this is probably the most significant opportunity this community will have to make a distinctive difference in how, how the world perceives us going forward. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, David. I'd like to take, Mark, give a couple of comments, sir? I'd like to take comments from the audience now. We'll start with Mr. Heron. You have any comments, sir? My God. Okay, comments from anybody? Yes, ma'am, please. Yes, ma'am.
I want to ask--
Give, give your name, please.
Irene Levine.
Thank you.
Mid-island resident. I want to ask more about the further expansion of the airport. Didn't we just expand it? Are we going to expand it further? And are we talking about the length of the runway or area around it?
This is not a runway expansion, it's the expansion of a terminal.
Okay.
Yes.
And will we also have a multi-level parking structure there?
I don't know and I don't think they know.
Well, I think we should, but you know. And there was something else. Oh, the passive versus active park? I'm not entirely sure what that means. Does passive, can someone say what the passive versus active is?
Brian? Go up and speak.
In, in general terms, the passive would mean more of a nature preserve, open ground, not necessarily court games or any high activity, places of trails, open spaces, preserved woodlots. Active would be tennis courts, pickleball courts, basketball courts, large playgrounds and, and things that generate a lot of people, a lot of sweat and a lot of activity. So there's--
Would it entail what they have over at Town Center, a lot of noise?
Yes, and to, to answer that, let me add what I should have added, that Jennifer has been involved with, and that is coordinating development in other parks that we're now updating along with this park. So the, the new Mid-Island Park, whatever it will be called, doesn't carry the burden of all the deficiencies we have on the active recreation side of things. Jennifer, along with the design teams of those projects, is choreographing what goes-- Jennifer, along with the design teams of those projects, is choreographing what goes in what park for the reasons stated before. If we need more tennis courts, might it make sense to put tennis courts where they are today? Again, that's a process that needs to work itself out. But again, to Mr. Ames' point, I'm trying to keep myself as objective as possible, let this process play out. But as I look at that piece of ground, it screams to me that it wants to be more passive in uses and not that high-activity places. We have other parks in the system, very nice parks, mind you. We have a very nice park system, by the way, here. Feel somewhat qualified to comment on that, and we can add to that without bringing burdensome development here.
Good. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Heather?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I wanted to say thank you to the council for proceeding today with this amazing opportunity. I'm speaking today on behalf of myself and Frank Babel, who couldn't be here with us. So just a couple of comments for y'all. First of all, thank you. Three years ago, many of you, Glenn, Bill, Tamara, I'm not sure if you were on, John, Tom, David, y'all voted to make Parks and Recreation a high priority for Hilton Head Island, and you did it. And we've progressed so much, and I really, really, really want to thank you for making that commitment to the town of Hilton Head Island and to families. So thank you for making that commitment three years ago. Thank you for investing in the Parks and Rec Plan. Thank you for folding that Parks and Rec Plan into the R-PAN process. I mean, all of that work brought us here today, and I really am grateful. Truly, thank you. So a couple of things I just wanted to point out. I really think that we need to identify our different audiences here. Glenn touched on it, so did Alex, a couple of you did as well. Who are we doing this for? This is what I would like to see come out of those stakeholder meetings. In marketing, we call them marketing avatars. Who are these people that we're going to be servicing through this park? And not just for the park, but also for the opportunity zone and the redevelopment. I would like to see us create those and then build around them to improve the quality of lives for all the different people that we're servicing. Second, we have to talk about workforce housing on this property. It butts up right against the legends, and the legends currently are serving as workforce housing. People are buying into those properties, and they're upholsterers, and they're, you know, restaurant managers. That's an opportunity that we cannot miss, so I really encourage you guys to look at that. And then three, I just need to remind you, please redevelop this entire area and the park, but also the area with the opportunity zone for residents, for residents, not for our visitors. Our visitors are an integral part of that, but our residents really need to be at the forefront of this project. And thank you again.
Thank you. Terry, now, if you could make-
My name is Terry Heron. I didn't plan to speak today, but you woke me up, so here I am, and I wanted to share a story with you. I've been in the park with a lot of different people, mostly ecology types, history types, cultural types of people, and shown it to a couple dozen people, close up and personal. About two weeks ago, I had two professionals from Clemson Extension. I didn't know much about Clemson Extension, but it's statewide, and it's very significant in protecting and improving our environmental assets around the state. And I said to them at the end of their journey around the park, after about an hour, and we were all soaking wet, and I handed them their towels, I said, "All right, how do you rank this? You see everything all over the state, you've spent your whole life doing this stuff. How do you rank this one as an opportunity?" And they said, "Are you kidding? This is a 10-plus. This is so rare in Beaufort County or in the tri-county area, Jasper, Beaufort, Colleton. This is an amazing place. It has so many amazing natural assets just waiting to be enjoyed." And they reminded me, and I don't know the county or the tri-county that well, but they reminded me that it really is a very unique piece of property, and to do something world-class or special with it is there's probably no other opportunity like this that they could think of in terms of open lands that are available and in the middle of a population. Think of where it's at, and think of the 2.5 million plus the rest of us. So you all know that, and I'm so pleased that you all have this sense of, I don't know, you're very protective and very, very, very worried about this, and you see it as a wonderful opportunity, and I think that's cool. I think that's really exciting that you all feel that way, no matter what is finally decided. So that's my speech. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Is there anyone else in the audience? Larry?
Good afternoon, thank you. It's nice to see you all again. My comment here is, in listening to the wonderful feelings and comments and views of all of us, I don't want to lose track of the fact of who is the customer? What brought each of us here? What is bringing people here today? We need to take care of how we live today, and we are blessed with this nature, and we should keep it that way as long as we can because that is the attraction that gives the peace of tranquility of our island and our lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dilly?
Hi, Jack Dilly, I'm just speaking on my own behalf, but having kind of studied this, 100 acres is really large. That's a full golf course. If you're at hole number one, you have no idea what's at hole number five, right? And we have a lot of neighborhoods around that with young people, old people, lots of different people, and there's a lot you could do there, and you would never see the other sides. You know, it's not a small park, it's a lot of land. And if we think too small and too passive, you know, then we miss our opportunity to change and improve development. If we're concerned about the level of development there now, and we go small and simple, then why isn't that area improving now on its own with the park the way it is? All you'd be doing is putting a trail through it, and if that's not spurring redevelopment as we wish, then we'll have to think of something on some scale. So we've all seen the deficiencies that we have for parks, active recreation and things, and we have lots of land to put them on, and it's going to be some horse trading around what to put where and what would fit that neighborhood better than another park, but we can get it done. So let's just not lose sight of all the people around there, what they want, and all the land we have and all the opportunity we have, and it's going to be fun. It's going to be a lot of fun. So thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Someone else back there? Miss?
Hi, Pauline Leland. I live in Port Royal Plantation Community. We don't know what to call ourselves now. When the, when this property was sold, I was apprehensive, not knowing, you know, what it would be, and then I felt very comfortable with the idea of a passive park. My husband and I came just to hear all about it. But it doesn't sound like a possibility that's going to be just a passive park. I am a pickleball player, avid. However, the idea of having pickleball courts there as a possibility made me think of a lot of things. It made me think that the people from Bluffton will come to Hilton Head Island, that the tourists that are on the south end are going to come mid-island. There's a lot that they can do here. There will be a lot of noise, there'll be a lot more commotion. Where are all these people going to be? They can't, they can't stay overnight. Be sure that you see what's going to go on in the mid-island. You're going to bring traffic from both sides. A little passive park with streams and all that stuff, that's one thing. You start bringing in things that people want, how are we going to control all of that in this mid-island tract? Now, in answer to his question, perhaps I'm mistaken, but I thought the town had said they were only going to develop a portion of this large 100-acre tract. I didn't think they were going to make that a big park. So am I mistaken about that, that it was only going to be a small park that would be passive?
The instructions to the consultant were look at the whole acreage and see, not just part of it, yes.
Yeah, and you know, as everybody knows the expression from Field of Dreams, "If you build it, they will come." So we have to really be careful. We have a lot of traffic at Matthews Road, accidents and everything. I just heard something very concerning, and I don't know if it's valid because I just heard it the other day, that the old Stein Mart is now an indoor go-kart.
That's in Bluffton.
That's the one in Bluffton. Thank goodness. Okay, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Well, thank you very much. Bringing it back to council, any more comments from council? Go ahead.
Just the, you know, I think that there's a lot of apprehension at this point, a lot of unknowns. We have a lot of documentation to work from, a great team working on it, and I think many concerned and citizens that when this is all done, the goal is that we are world-class, that the residents do come first, and that the rest will fall into place with careful oversight and considerations each step of the way. So I'm excited today, and I look forward to the future.
You have a follow-up comments over here? Could I have a motion to adjourn? Yes, Mr. Glenn.
I just want to suggest, Brian, please include that progress chart on the town website. We have a play there, placed there for major initiatives. This should be certainly at the top of that list so that people can see where it is as it's progressing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Can I have a motion? Yes?
My name's Joan Hazel, and I'm also in Port Royal Plantation. Two words that came out during this discussion kind of scared me. Alex mentioned rezoning, and I just want to know, will anything be rezoned as part of this until you get the community feedback on the-
You'll be involved as the process we go along, yes?
I'm sorry.
You'll be involved in the process as it goes along.
Okay, great. And the same with, I think, like Brian mentioned, the Ashmore Tract possibly going to retail. That would all be part of stakeholder feedback also.
Yes, it would be.
Thank you.
Okay, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor is right hand. Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.